Yeah, I'd like to call and order this special meeting of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners. So I'd like to ask everyone to please stand while I ask Commissioner Branch to lead us in a word of prayer, and then you may stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here today. Thank you for allowing us to live in Jackson County and have the people that we do have here living here. Thank you for everything that you do for us. We ask that you lead, guide, and direct us on every decision made here tonight. We thank you for everything in Christ's name. Amen.
What we need is to do with fire, of the United States of America, and to be a part of what we should stand.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the, uh, to the meeting, to the special meeting tonight. Chair Lunt and Hannah motion to approve the agenda. Got a motion from Commissioner Branch, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions, comments, clarifications here? Now, all those in favor of the motion stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and open up a, uh, public hearing. I think I'm doing that in the right order. We'll go ahead and open up a public hearing. Uh, before we, uh, ask for any public comment, I would like to announce the following. Uh, this, uh, public hearing is to, uh, fund the proposed budget. It requires seven point nine four five oh mills, which is fourteen point eight percent more than the current year rollback rate of six point nine five eight three. The purpose is to maintain the current services under the jurisdiction of Jackson County Board of County Commissioners and other consti- other county constitutional officers. Okay, with that being said, I'll ask if there is anyone in the audience wishing to either speak, uh, uh, speak for or against the adoption of the, uh, of the millage rate or the, uh, intended budget? Yes, sir, if you would, come forward and state your name for the record, please, sir.
Okay, Gary Waite, eight sixteen Shelby Avenue, Alfred, Florida. I got six houses behind my house on Alfred. My real question about this budget, it's not a big amount of money, but it's a twenty-five percent county raise. So my real question is, the people behind me are with four two, what the heck do you do? For the county, what does the county do for Shelby Avenue in Alfred, Florida? I haven't seen anything. And I think taxes, even though it's only eighty dollars, I think is your increase. I think taxes should be predicated on the services the county provides to taxpayers. And I surely don't see you doing anything for eight sixteen or Shelby Avenue.
Is that inside the town?
What's that?
Is that inside the town of Alfred City Limits?
That's, uh, it's sort of like, uh, Compass Lake, Little Pass Compass Lake, and that's another thing. Glad you brought it up. Right down the street is Wood Avenue, which is in the Compass Lake section. I checked the taxes, but the tax ladies are nice here. I can't argue with them. They're very sweet. They gave me a lot of information. But the, uh, they're paying like dirt cheap taxes down there and on, on Wood. And, uh, I'm just like, I mean, you know, it's, I can't complain to overall for where I came from, New Jersey. Your taxes are all my bad, okay? But still, twenty-five percent.
What? I surprised you're standing there coming from New Jersey. Oh, those tax rates are very high up there.
The tax rates are very hot, but a twenty-five percent raise brought me here today. Well, it's only eighty dollars, but brought me here today because I just wanted to get a straight answer. What the heck do you do to deserve it? To tell somebody like me that you deserve that eighty dollars? Because I don't see, I think taxes should be really, you should look at what you do for people and you, you fix their road. We have, we own our own road, I was told by one of my neighbors. The road we own. So what do you do? I got people looking at dogs run loose all over the place. I've never seen anything like it. Okay, so I've just really came here today to ask you, what do you do for, uh, tax for me?
Well, I'll, I'll be happy to answer that in kind of a general way. Uh, there are a number of services that Jackson County does provide. Uh, gosh, uh, the sheriff's office, uh, we found the sheriff's office, Jackson County Fire Rescue, uh, Jackson County Road and Bridge, uh, which takes care of, uh, a number of, uh, infrastructure-related projects, including grading roads, patching roads, um...
You're, you're, you're zero there. You don't do nothing but our roads.
Well, I don't know.
The roads are zero.
If it's a private road, they're responsible for it. The county nor the town of Alfred is going to be responsible.
Apparently, one of my neighbors, I'm new here, but one of my neighbors said, we kind of own the road. So you don't do anything for our roads, okay? Uh, so you have the sheriff, and, and I love the sheriff coming by, and the sheriff comes by when needed. But it's not, that's, that's just the sheriff. It's not justification for twenty-five percent.
Fire rescue, ambulance services.
I'm sorry, sir?
Ambulance services, fire rescue, you know, we have.
Oh, well, do we have a, I don't know if we have a volunteer fire department or not, if, if we have a page, if it's.
No, I would say we provide those services.
Oh, you're, okay, you provide them. Why the twenty-five percent increase? I mean, okay, so the first question goes to a second question. It's a twenty-five percent increase. Like I said, it's only eighty dollars. What jumped at me is you were a big increase as the twenty-five percent hit. Why twenty-five percent?
I can answer that kind of generally.
Go ahead.
If you'll give me an opportunity. There's been a number of things that we have been dealing with over the last several years. Uh, number, one of the things is the minimum wage increase that we're having to comply with. Uh, that has, uh, forced us, uh, in some instances to raise, uh, the, the minimum rate that we're paying our, some of our employees. Uh, that has led to wage compression, uh, whereby we're having to pay sometimes new employees that are coming on, uh, up to twelve, thirteen dollars an hour. Uh, it, it, it causes wage decompression, compression actually. Where we're having, we've got some employees that have been here for a longer time, uh, a great deal of time in comparison to somebody that's just been hired, having to raise those, um, to stay competitive with surrounding counties. We've had to look at wage, uh, rate increases. The cost of fuel has gone up tremendously, um, for Road and Bridge, for Jackson County Fire Rescue. The cost of, uh, parts, uh, ambulance parts, the cost of everything, cost of office products. It, it's all gone up. Inflation is, we're dealing with inflation just like most of you are dealing with. We're seeing it across the board in just about every department, I'm sure, is seeing increased costs of providing those services relative to inflation.
Well, I thank you for your, your answers, and many of your answers were legitimate answers. I could see inflation being a part of the problem. But I, I basically was saying, since we own the road, we own the road. There's gotta be a way to get these higher taxes out of the people that you're doing more for. That's pretty much where I came.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
When did you move from New Jersey?
Uh, about a year and a half ago. First, I was on an RV, now I put a single wide on, on my property and I just got my.
You said you have six homes?
I'm sorry?
You said you had six homes?
Six homes?
Is that what you said?
No, 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 that's my accent, sir. That's a northern accent. Oh, I, I had an RV on the property when I first got here.
Right.
Then I had a single wide, brand new, put on my property.
Okay.
Okay, and I got, you know.
Your taxes obviously are gonna go up when you put the single wide on versus.
Yes, and I did improvements, and I explained to tax ladies, I, you know, I kept my, I kept my cool. I was polite with them.
But another thing that.
But they explained to me why my taxes were the way I are. So I told the tax ladies when I was there, my only gripe was gonna be with the county.
Sure.
Not on the, I don't care about what you're raising for the kids in school. It was, it was an insignificant raise, but the twenty-five percent seemed high when there are other areas in Jackson County that get more of your services that I believe should be taxed more. That's just my, my opinion. I thank you for listening.
Appreciate you, appreciate your comments.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir, come forward, state your name for the record, please, sir.
Good evening. My name's John Taylor. Um, I am a recent resident, uh, to your public county. Uh, we moved here, uh, about a year ago, um, out in Greenwood, bought a nice little house. Part of our consideration of coming here was the pretty reasonable tax rate when, when we decided to move from Virginia. I, I lived in Florida all my life. Um, I retired, I worked in fire rescue for thirty years, and, uh, when I retired, we went up to Virginia and bought a little farm. And, uh, it just got with the health issues my wife and I have, uh, got too much. So we decided to come back to Florida and pick Greenwood. It's been great. Um, I've been, uh, had the pleasure of interacting with your police and fire services here, and they're, they're excellent. And, uh, I give you guys kudos for that. The, the county itself just seems like a, a really wonderful place to live. And, uh, our, I'm here obviously to talk about the taxes, so that's all the good. Give you the good news first, but, uh, when we, uh, came down here last year, I can, I'm looking at our taxes, at six hundred and eighty-seven dollars for twenty twenty-two. Um, and that, that included everything. And, uh, we saw that and we paid that last year. And to tell you the truth, I've been in and out of the hospital. My wife has had some major health issues. We really didn't pay too much attention to the property tax over the year. And we, we knew we had to file for exemption, which we have, and we're late doing, just because we had no idea. You know, we figured a six hundred dollars, um, it wouldn't be that much of a, a big deal if we didn't get the exemption this year. And then when we got our tax bill, uh, if, if this new budget goes through, it goes from six eighty-seven to two thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars. And that, I nearly had a heart attack. We're both on, uh, fixed incomes, uh, as I'm sure many of your county residents are. And, and believe me, I, being in the fire service for thirty years, I'm familiar with, uh, budgets and funding and, and how difficult, um, you know, that is to keep services going, especially, you know, in a time like this. I haven't, I haven't seen a financial time with an inflation rate that's bad in, in my memory. Uh, so I do understand that. Um, I'm just trying to get a handle on how, you know, my taxes have gone up almost. I've never, I've never seen, uh, an amount like that in, uh, my experience in thirty to forty years. Um, and it, it's at least a hundred percent. I know inflation is, you know, right about ten, I imagine. I'm not a, not an economist, but, um, it just, I mean, we're, we're shocked, and I'm sure many other people must be shocked. And, and I, I really haven't looked at the budget, so I don't know where exactly the, the money is going and where and why these increases are, and I'll, I'll be, with, a, a copy would probably be available, you know.
I have a question for you, Ms. Taylor.
Sure, sure.
Oh, that twenty twenty-two year, was that a full tax year for you?
Um.
Or partial?
Let's see. That, that might have been partial. Yeah, that might have been partial.
Have you discussed this with, uh, Ms. Hay?
The property appraiser? Yeah, that's, we're, we're in the process of, of working through that too, because our, our, uh, our market value and our assessed value went up a pretty good amount. And I, I understand there's, uh, there's a limit on, on what that can be, which I really don't understand with the interest rates is high, how the property value can, can go up. So there's, there's a few areas that, you know, that we're working on. But it does seem that, you know, the, the, the base tax rate has, has went up a, a pretty big jump in just one year. And that, that's what I'm trying to understand and, uh.
Yeah, because that doesn't quite add up. The, the percentage of the increase, uh, for the taxes going up fourteen percent over the rollback rate. The proposed millage rate.
I have a question for you. Is, are you getting those numbers from your trim notice?
That's right.
The one they sent out and says it's not a tax bill?
Uh, yes.
Throw it away.
Yeah, that, that's been good, yeah.
Help me understand that.
Well, what we have to do as a board is we have to, early on, we have to set a possible millage rate, okay? And what was it?
Was it, it was a full, full mill above, it was eight point four?
Yeah, it was seven point four five four five. Been that way for years, and then we set it a full mill above. The reason we do that is because in working through this budget, we have to set the millage rate early. We can go down, but we can't go up.
Gotcha.
So these trim notices.
So this is responsible for my heart attack. I'll know that next year, so.
Partially responsible for it, but, you know, there's gotta be more to it than that.
There's something going on with it.
Yeah, well, and I, I do think probably the amount we paid was, was a, not a full, not a full year.
Right, pro rata.
That, that I hadn't.
Have you done any improvement?
Uh, not really. I mean, we put a fence in, a five thousand dollar fence.
Where'd you come from in Virginia?
Uh, a little town called Duffield. We're in the mountains and it was, uh.
I live in Northern Virginia, so.
Yeah.
You couldn't complain about that.
It was great. Our taxes never went up for years, but it, we're probably a smaller county, but, uh, yeah, I'm just trying to understand it. And, and, uh, you know, I, I know in the past, you know, when I was working for fire rescue, it was very difficult. We needed equipment, we needed, uh, you know, a lot of things, we needed personnel, and, uh, it was very difficult. But what we had to do is, you know, some years we just said, well, we're not getting it this year.
Just to answer your question, because I, I've been a commissioner now for two years, and we've gone through the budget two years prior to this year. And just so the audience knows, when we go through that budget, it's a, it's a week to two-week-long process. When we go through the budget, line item by line item. In the last two years, uh, especially last year, we actually put off, we, we put off raising taxes, uh, last year at all. Left the tax rate the same as what it was. We put off a number of, uh, capital improvement initiatives that we really needed to do last year. I think we were hoping that as property values continued to go up, we may not have to look at a tax rate increase.
Right.
But after going through the budget this year, uh, going through it line item by line item, looking at a number of things that were underfunded last year, fuel, fuel really was something that hit us hard, fuel cost. Um, but there were other things like, uh, re-chassising ambulances. You came from fire rescue, we put off on putting new chassis under two ambulances last year because we just didn't have the funds to do it. Well, this year, we, we've got to do that. So there, you know, I, I guess what I'm saying is we have gone through that budget, line item by line item. And because of the inflation that we're all, that we're all dealing with, uh, because of the minimum wage increases that we're all dealing with, uh, the, the revenue that we're producing as a result of taxes has stayed right here. But the cost of providing government services, fire rescue, sheriff, road and bridge, animal control, mosquito control, all of those things have continued to go up and up. And for the last two years, we've used non-recurring American recovery dollars to fund the difference between what it was costing us to, you know, the expenditures, what it was costing us to provide the services, and, you know, what we were bringing in. And, you know, we just cannot continue to do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Clay, can you explain the value adjustment board to him?
Uh, today was the last day to sit in the division, but, um.
Sorry about that.
Let's be tried.
Uh, but, and, and the value adjuster board can make exceptions to that. Uh, normally they don't, but it's where you challenge your market value of what the property appraiser has. It's a, it's a methodology where you can come in before the value adjuster board, which is two members of the county commission, two members of the school board, and two public individuals, um, that sit there and listen to yours and, so this page's, um, explanation of why it went up. And, and she says why it went up, and you think, say why you feel like it, you know, didn't. So it's an avenue that the individual has to be able to challenge the market value of, of this product.
Thank you. Well, I, I appreciate your, uh, your candor, and you're explaining this to me that it's probably won't be the numbers on here, because anything below there would, it would be a great help. And, and I applaud you for your work in, um, government, and I wouldn't want to do the same uh, myself, I don't think, but, um.
Well, certainly whenever we're talking about raising taxes, it's no fun, because I think we're all property owners. I own several pieces of property and the tax, I, I'm not exempt from paying those, those taxes either. So I'm feeling it, uh, I just like many of you are as well, in my pocketbook as well. But, uh, again, the cost of, uh, providing government services has continued to escalate. Uh, uh, you know, inflation is, is really caused, uh, caused that for the most part. And, uh, I just don't know that we have any choice.
Well, and, and a, a copy of the budget, just because I, just from my own personal knowledge.
It's online.
It's online, okay, because I, I'm planning on volunteering my services for your, the local fire department if they'll have me. Maybe, maybe you can knock off.
Always look for a few good men.
Maybe, maybe you can knock off some of them, uh, twelve dollar an hour employees.
Another thing, you, you know, you said you were the fire rescue.
That's right.
And you know what it costs probably to operate fire and rescue and salaries? And, uh, we probably, uh, still close to the lowest tax rate in any other surrounding counties. But, uh, we sometime lose good employees to other counties because they pay them more money. You know, we can't pay them more money, and the only way you can do that, if you have, you know, get, your rates is up, and with a dollar, uh, hour increase that mandated us to have to do, you know, with that many employees, quite a bit of money.
Absolutely.
Well, you know, and, and it's not coming from anywhere else, you know, that's.
I do understand.
I, I understand, you know. You know, taking a hit everywhere you're going around, at least for most too, but we getting that same hit.
I do appreciate you guys, and I appreciate the work that you do and all, like, try to stay involved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, is it possible the microphone can be turned up a little?
Do. Yes, and you might pull it down just a little bit for you, just there you go.
I'm pretty much here to echo what the last gentleman just said. My name is Sally Donnelly, and I live in Camellia Gardens. I moved here last June, and I realized that the property taxes were from the previous owner. I paid six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. With your proposed bill and the raising, my taxes are gonna triple. You're quoting me at eighteen hundred and seven dollars. And I think that it's outrageous. But I'm widow, I lost my husband six months after being here. Home insurance went up six hundred dollars. Water bill tripled. Everything just piling on. Your five percent gas tax pile, now this is piling on. A lot of us in, in my neighborhood live on a fixed income. And I just want to voice my opinion that I know you talk about having to raise salaries and all of that, but our salaries don't get raised. And there's gonna be a point where, you know, we're not gonna be able to afford our homes. So I just want to let you all know that, maybe consider the fact that it's hard on a lot of those people out here that want to have their own home and be able to afford to live in it. So thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you for your comments, and, uh, we certainly are sympathetic. Uh, you know, I'm, I know that I took all that into consideration. While there were a number of factors that, you know, went into consideration, but, uh, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
My name is Josie Butler. I live out on Five Points Road. Um, I understand where your numbers were coming from, but I think they were a little misleading in that, um, my bill states that the tax rate was seven point four four five in twenty-two. And should there be no changes, it was going to be a six point nine five eight three millage. The proposal is for eight point four nine five oh millage, which is a resulting twenty-two point oh eight percent increase. And then in addition to that, you have property values. Um, I believe, I don't know how that works across the board, but I experienced three percent increase, which is great. I expected with the influx, everybody wanting to come to Florida. We got great things going on here that that would increase. So that in a, in addition to that twenty-two percent increase, you've increased the value that you're taxing. So it's getting higher, and I understand that there's a thing called inflation. But I think that I can propose another option, and it's an unpleasant one, but it's what we have to experience. We have to cut our spending. We have to shop differently at the grocery store. We have to not drive places because of the cost of gas. We have to not purchase things that we would like to have. I'm a farmer, and I got news for you, the costs are going up, not, we're not making more money. And when prices increase, I have nowhere else to go but into other things that are necessary. So I hope you take this seriously and think hard. I've been in positions like yourself as far as in working in government and in private organizations. But when you're taxing your voters, we won't forget. Okay? This is a tough time for all of us. I'm sure you all have had to tighten your belts too. And I think that there's programs that you can look at harder. And I'm sorry, but we have, we can't hire people at the farm at all because of the cost. We do it ourselves. I'm sorry, but the solution may have to be that you're gonna have to tighten it up. You all may have to clean the bathrooms and do the other things. I haven't do that at my farm, at my business. And I know that it's nice to have these people in government offices. It's a, but there may have to be cuts that you experience. And I'm sorry to say that, but I hope you consider that seriously, because we have to cut our way of life.
Thank you. State your name, please.
My name is Melissa Moniz, and my husband owns an appliance repair business here in town. And we are, like everybody else, getting hit with everything going on here. Um, one of the concerns is not, is obviously the raising the taxes. Our taxes are now over three thousand dollars. We have a home, we moved from South Florida. I'm paying now what I paid in South Florida to live here. And this is not what we expected. We expected to have a quality of life, and that quality of life is fading quick. I'm, I'm disgusted by some of the, the, the financials going on everywhere, not just here, obviously. Um, we're being forced as a company to go and service and be in other towns to help them out. And with gas prices going up and now our taxes going through the roof, and yes, we did have an improvement. We had a ninety-square-foot improvement that raised our taxes through the roof. I am still fighting it, but I want you to know that an improvement and people coming here and my assessed value going up doesn't help me at all. I don't want to sell and make money and move. We want to live here and have a quality of life. So you're killing the people who have been here from the beginning, who want quality of life, and the people who have moved here a long time ago, for the ones who are moving from up north and other states to come here and raise our assessed values so that they can come here. And, yeah, my property, i- i- it's going, that's nice that it's going up, but I want to stay here. So you're doing me a disservice by continuing to raise the prices and raise my taxes. So I want to know, how are we gonna keep the people who have been here and who want to stay here and who have invested their time in building a business and building a community with their fellow workers and their fellow neighbors? How are we gonna keep those people? Because those are the people that are the backbone of this city. It's not the ones coming in that are gonna make money and invest in fifty properties. It's the ones who have been here and want to stay here. What are we gonna do about that? Because this is not gonna help. Some of it will, but this high of an increase will not help.
Just for clarification, uh, the, the, uh, to speak to the last lady, the, the rollback rate of six point nine five eight three, that is, that is the rate that we would have to charge to raise the same exact number of tax dollars that we did last year. So our current, our current rate right now is seven point four four five oh, I believe. And what we're.
If there was no increase in budget. And I'm just, I, as I say in my statement, it says in here that this is, if there was, it says clearly on here, if no budget change to the adopted twenty twenty-three. So that means if they did last year, this is what the rate. So that means if they did last year, this is what the ratio be from what this chart said.
But it's about to change it.
So they're saying, you're saying you've increased not only six point nine five eight, but you're going up to eight point four now. It's a twenty-two percent increase from what.
What I'm telling you, but what I'm, but you didn't hear what I said earlier. Last two years, we have been operating a budget deficit of millions of dollars, millions of dollars. We've been using American recovery dollars to fund that million, those million dollar gaps. And what we're bringing in and what it's costing us to raise, to provide services.
Can I relate to that? I want to hear again, Michael too. Okay, we've all been working in a debt. All right? And I'm sorry, but the inflation and what's going on, I got nothing more for you. Is what we're saying. You're getting that's for blood from the turnip.
Yeah, Terry.
Yes, Commissioner Peacock.
You're talking about the increase in value. The state does that.
I get that.
They, they, they can go up three percent for inflation. And ever since I've been on the board, every year they do it. Even though we hold, we were holding the military at seven four four five four five. We still had to advertise a tax increase because they were increasing the price of the property.
I get that. And I, I did talk to the tax collectors office. And they, you know, and I know about Savior Home three percent. My issue is, is that a lot of our assessed values and the recent three percent, maybe not one percent one year. Has a lot to do with people who are coming in, who are raising value because of the sale price of twenty twenty-two in the beginning of twenty twenty-three. And she's like, that's what has affected the, you know, that is continuing to affect us are the people moving in, raising our values. And like I said, my issue is, is we're trying to stay here. We have built a business that we're trying to stay here. But it's, it, you know, what we signed up for and what we're getting is not the same thing. So, I mean, a gradual increase is one thing, but being hit and slammed in a financial deficit all over the United States is a disgrace.
And that's not, to me, I think this is a gradual increase.
I'm sorry?
I think this is a gradual increase.
I think everybody.
Sorry, but if you look at mine, it's, yeah, if you look at dollar amount, it's not.
I think everybody's working off of that trim notice.
Yeah.
And I've said before, the trim notice is more than what we're, we're looking at. Matter of fact, it's a half a million. Plus the fact, if you look at that trim notice, it's got about four or five categories in it. It's got accounting. It's got schools.
Which is scary because mine went up over three hundred of those schools.
It's got, uh, the, the water management and the state tax.
Yeah, but we were just.
Only one that we have any problem, that we have any authority over that. We can't help. And if you live in a city, the city may be increasing the tax. I don't know.
No, I don't. I wouldn't after the water and sewer here. But thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I got one for you. Come on, come on.
Much is the taxes gonna raise on agriculture plan?
How much? Same, uh, it's the same percentage?
Same percentage. We, uh, we took quite a hit in the last couple of years with our farmers that we have a cattle, stuff like that. And our output has been so much. I don't know what's gonna happen to have. Have y'all thought about putting a bed tax in some of these big hotels or stuff to try to offset some of the price?
It's already there.
Increase it more.
Relax.
I'm not telling you how to do your job.
Could you state your name, please?
Mark Forret. I was just, I didn't have all my paperwork here. I just found out about the meat this afternoon. And, uh, if y'all can, just try to help as much of agriculture out and hear everybody else out. If y'all gonna do the bed tax or, you know, all them. Y'all who floating them down the creek, tax still out of them too. You know, they're coming from Tallahassee over here. And floating down the creek, tax them, you know, make them pay for what we have here in our county. Been here my whole life and I don't wanna go nowhere and I'm not gonna go nowhere. I appreciate you all this time.
Appreciate your comments.
Help us all you can, if you don't mind, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Name's Josh Ellis. Um, I grew up here, Marianna, Florida. I've worked my entire life. So, uh, I just, just curious, um, does everybody, anybody back here know what district you're from? Anybody from District One? Anybody District One, District Two, District Three, Four, District Five? Anybody excited about the taxes?
No.
No? So here's the thing, is we voted for y'all. And I pretty much can confidently say you don't represent us right now. Is that pretty much correct? Here's the thing, okay? I understand inflation. I'm blessed. I feel like I'm kind of old school as far as, um. Think about how to say this. Just kinda, just growing up, I wanna, if anybody, just growing up around here. Me and my wife have been married twelve years. We got four kids. Just like everybody else, hit by Hurricane Michael. So who paid, who paid the Hurricane Michael bill for the electric company? Anybody else? I did. Okay? You know what I had to do? Cut what I did. I couldn't go on these vacations that I wanted to, couldn't take my wife on these trips. We had to cut back. Sorry to be emotional because I like to provide for my family. I have a fixed income. I have a fixed income. If I can't do something, if I can't afford it, I cut back. And what you're making us do, what, what if I wanted to go to my wife and I said, or excuse me, that it's like, hey, I'm gonna take you to Disney World this year. We got some stuff I haven't been able to do it in a long time. I can't go to my neighbors and make them force, force them to pay it. But that's exactly what you're doing to us. If you can't keep up with your budget, if you're half a million, two million dollars behind, that's your problem. It really is. Poplar Springs Road, Peacock, you don't represent me right now. I'm just telling you how it is.
Live on Poplar Springs?
I live on Poplar Springs. So, so.
It's going to be paid.
That doesn't matter to me right now.
Okay.
If it, hey, if it's gonna keep my taxes from going, I've driven up and down that dirt road for two years and it's been a dirt road for as long as I can remember. It can't even be maintained right now. It's a dirt road. I'm hitting potholes. And then you're gonna pave it. How many potholes I'm gonna have after that? They flop and that is twenty miles an hour speed limit. People fly down the dirt road going sixty-five miles an hour. You, so you can't even maintain what you're doing now. I mean, you're trying to, you're trying to buy me, buy my approval with what you're going to do. And that's not gonna happen. Taxes going up. Does, affects every one of us. If you can't manage your budget, cut somewhere. I have to. But you're gonna force me. I've already cut, like she said, you're squeezing blood from a turnip. I'm ring dry. And now you're gonna increase my taxes. You're gonna increase their taxes.
We're gonna increase our taxes.
That's fine. You might can afford it. I can't. So earlier, I wanna point out something you said. I heard, I heard capital improvement. What kind of capital improvements? You said, first off, you started off saying, we got to, uh, be able to maintain what we're having restricted for maintenance. And then a little thing accidentally slipped in there, capital improvements. It sounds like some other projects on the side. Trying to come into fruition. My question is, here's, here's one of my, here's one of my questions. Assessed value went up, right? If we kept it at the same rate, would you not receive more this year? I mean, if my property is valued at a hundred thousand dollars last year, you keep it, theoretically ten percent, let's just say ten percent. And I said, you can hire him just a hundred thousand dollars, ten percent. It goes up to a hundred fifty, ten percent is still more money, right? Is that not increased? How many people are new to Jackson County? I heard, I saw some other people. You wanna increase revenue? Make more people wanna move here. You know why they moved here? Did somebody say tax rates? Is tax rates go up? You think they don't wanna move here? Or you think people gonna move away? Or they're gonna go somewhere that offers more for the same amount of taxes? I'm just being real with you. I know you all have a lot going on. I know there's so many things you have to deal with, but if you have to make cuts. I can't take my wife to do the things I wanna do. You just gotta have to hold off. Now's not the year. Inflation, they say ten percent, go to the grocery store. Everything's doubled. Right? Everything's gone up. And I feel sorry for these, I'm still, I'm still in the workforce. I feel sorry for people who have retired and they're stuck. They're stuck. Now you're gonna raise up their property taxes. They might not be able to afford it. But I wanted to make my face seen up here because I want to encourage, you know. I'm one of the younger faces. I wanna encourage the older generation that to know there's still people gonna fight and voice their opinions. And come up. All right? And I know, well, I'll leave it at that. So just want you, just want you to know. I know y'all do a lot, but this room in here, if we could afford it, we wouldn't be here.
Right, anyone else?
Call it Cottondale. And I think that everybody stood it together. I'm a Florida native, tired air force. And stationed at Tindal seventy-five, seventy-six. Loved it. Moved down here, wanted property, don't wanna live on the beach. And Jackson County presented an opportunity on the view of the registers with the meatpacking and the peanut. I bought one of their Zeke's property back in ninety-nine. So. Again, the quality of life, yeah, we've had our issues. Michael cost me a new roof, fifteen new windows, a pole barn, you name it. Sixty trees. I've spent thousands just trying to get back to square one. And you come up here, not only is it unconscionable. It's unfathomable. To see this kind of increase from one year to next. And yes, you know. Look at the median age of these people. I mean, you're all here. I'm almost seventy. Okay? I don't have a whole lot of years to, you know, even do contract work and what I do now. Okay? Yeah. I know everybody's got, you know, there were ills. But this kind of increase, what happens next year? Okay, if you're already living behind, you're gonna keep pushing. And the next year, our incomes are not gonna go up a hundred percent year to year. We gotta dig deeper, cutting. My wife, honey, when's the last time you took a real vacation? How many years ago? Eight years? We may not have another one for another ten years. Who knows? You know? But like I said, you look at the median age, we cannot, we're not gonna have this kind of, you know, increase in our income. So you've got to find a way. Waddle it back down. I mean, from, like I said, from. Twelve hundred, I mean, on top of the tax, you know, we still got the school taxes on top of that. They've gone up too. But the biggest increase percentage wise is on the property taxes. And yeah, it's more than a hundred percent. You squeeze these turnips too hard, you're gonna drive people away. I mean, I've been out here, I said, over twenty, almost twenty-five years. And I've seen the lack of business development. You look at downtown Cottondale, there are more boarded up buildings. And I see them here in Marianna, okay? I've traveled, you know, the countryside. It's sad. What are you doing to attract more business? You spread your base out. You increase the base. You don't squeeze the turnips that have been here, you know, on fixed incomes. But whatever it takes for you gentlemen, ladies. To get this down to something we can, you know, I can understand a couple percentage points, but a hundred percent? You're, you're gonna drive us away, you know? You're gonna drive all your constituents into bankruptcy? Can't pay the taxes. That, that's, that's a whole other argument. But don't, you know, don't kill us.
Appreciate your comments. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm not a public speaker. I just wanna make my thoughts known. I moved to Marianna and we love it here, three, just now, three years ago. I lost my husband recently. So now I am a one-income family, fixed income. And I panicked when I saw the bills. I don't know how I'm gonna keep doing that. I really don't. Uh, thanks for listening to me and. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would state your name for the record, please, sir?
My name's Mickey Gilmore. Oh, listen, I think, I think part of the problem with this is, is the timing on this thing is really bad. The last meeting y'all had, well, maybe not the last meeting, but the one where y'all were talking about the budget. And you wanted to keep it under eight percent. Remember? You said, I wanna keep it under eight if possible. Like that, you kept saying, what happened that it went up to eight point four or something?
Well, there again. It, it, again, as Commissioner Peacock explained, when we, early on in the process, we, we set the mill, the millage rate up a little bit higher. Because we know that we can come down, but we can't go up. So the proposed millage rate is not eight point four, but it's seven point nine. So we, we are able to keep it under eight mills. Uh, if we, if we follow forward with what we're talking about doing tonight, which is seven point nine four four, seven point nine four five oh.
That's under it, right? Well, okay, so that's good to that point. But the timing is bad because think about, gas is going back at. You're talking about inflation for your, your, your board, minister, all those things going on, but we have that here too. And some of it is worse than what you're talking about. So cutting back on some things would be really good, what you can look at. I understand you need money, but you haven't told them about the five cent on the gas yet, have you?
I haven't told them.
Is that coming up next to you?
We, that's already been approved.
That's been approved. So see, that five, that five cent on the gas comes out when the gas is going back up. It way, way back when it was low. If you'd been planning ahead and said, hey, you know, let's plan for the future. You put it in there when everyone can afford it and then they don't feel it when it becomes crunch time. Now it's crunch time and folks can't handle this. My, my, my property tax went up forty-three percent. That's about three thousand dollars. And, and I've only lived there two years. When I moved in, I didn't know this, when the tax people, what they do is, and when you move into a house, depending on what you bought it for. That's when they can come in one time and go through your house or take a look at it and readjust it. And they can really take it pretty high then. Then every year, they can raise it a certain percent, but not too much. I think you told me it was.
It can go up three percent. The state can raise it. They don't necessarily do it that much every year.
Right, but they can.
They can.
But then when you buy and sell a house, the difference is they can come in there, because when they came to my house, they came and said, we have to, oh, we need to remeasure something. And I'm saying, it's twenty-five years old. What's there to measure? Nothing has changed. I haven't added a room. I just moved in. Ain't been nothing done to the house. Oh, we just need to measure. So they went down and measured and it's the same as what they had, as what I have on my papers. And next I know, I'm up a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars in taxes. And now the proposal is to take that even higher than that. It's gonna take it up another two, almost two thousand dollars, fifteen hundred more dollars on that. Not break or break me on that, but the, the fact that they can do that and you're doing that, and then you're gonna throw five cent on the gas. It's killing the people. They're, they're struggling now. So you're gonna have to find a different way to, to trim your budget or, or control. And I know it's hard. I know it's very hard. I, I budgeted for Walmart for, God, I don't know how long. But during the tough times, I kept my budget, you know, I, I actually kept my budget low. During the good times, I kinda raised my budget because you didn't feel it. So this is what we're feeling. You're raising it when gas is going back up and you're talking about inflation. Well. We feel inflation worse than any of this. And you say, well, the gas seventy percent, it will come from other people. It comes a hundred percent from us because we buy the gas right here most of the time. So that's five more cent on top of that. So that's not gonna change. And right now, things are pretty tough. So if you would, you might wanna reevaluate some of the things that you have going on. That maybe you can trim back on some of. Not everyone has to have a paved road right now. They can, they can wait a little bit longer.
The paved roads are really typically paid for from state dollars. I, I don't, I don't know that we use the local dollars. Maybe there's some local dollars. Most of the locals' dollars goes towards grading dirt roads, which has to be done continuously. Pay, uh, patching potholes in paved roads. But a lot of the repaving that we get is, is done as a result of scrap, scrap and scot grants. So I, you know, I don't, I don't know. I guess there's probably some local discretionary dollars that have gone towards paving, but not very much since I've been here. So, you know, I don't, I don't know, I guess there's probably some local discretionary dollars that have gone towards paving, but not very much since I've been here. And I would, I'll say this also, Mr. Gilmore, that, you know, as I said earlier, I've gone through the budget. Two, this is the third year that I've gone through the budget, line item by line item. And we, we've been successful in cutting five hundred dollars there, putting off, doing a thousand dollars here, going through it. We've been able to cut here and there, but when you're looking at, you know, over a million dollars, and I think two years ago, it was almost two million dollars, that we were in a budget deficit, and we're using American recovery dollars to, to fund that. There's, there's no way to make those type of substantial cuts without substantially cutting back on the sheriff's budget, substantially cutting back on the road and bridge department, substantially cutting back on Jackson County Fire Rescue. And, and you guys don't hear those complaints, but when, when those things aren't happening from the county service standpoint, we hear the complaints about my roads not being graded, the ambulance didn't get here on time. I mean, there are a lot of services that we provide that, that are costing more and more and more. And when we can't provide those services at a minimum level, which is what we'll have to do if we don't start, if we don't follow through with raising these taxes, then we'll hear it from that side.
But taking it up that high, do you have to take it up that high? Because I've looked, I, I pull up your budget on the, on the line, I've looked at it. There's, there's some things that can be done there.
Like what?
Well, I'll have to, I'll have to itemize it with you on that. I didn't bring it here, and I didn't really come here to talk about that one as much as I, when I heard these folks talking about it, it just got me kind of fired up saying, yeah, you know, I'm sitting there paying all this stuff too. But then I, I didn't get to hear some of these folks that are really struggling with it, and really kind of just got me thinking, hey, maybe you just gotta go back through that again, item by item, and do it again before they start getting nailed. Because I, I heard these people's story, and I feel for them, I really do.
Clay, how much did we spend on Medicare last year?
What?
Medicare. Was it seven? Seven eighty-nine?
Something like that.
So there's a good chunk of money going to that also, that you did not mention, Medicare, that we have to pay.
And you pay that for why? For your, for your folks? For your folks, right?
Oh, no, no, no.
For the whole county?
We have the county, if.
Yeah, but I mean, you pay that for your-
We pay that, but what I'm talking about is the bill we get when people go to the hospital and things. That's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the employee.
But you don't pay it for me to go to the hospital.
Are you on Medicare?
Yeah.
You're in the hospital, there may be a charge that we get, right, Clay?
It is, it's based on the state, they assess that to us.
Another thing.
So that's really an un, almost an uncontrollable expense, because it's done by the state, sends it to you and says, you gotta pay this amount.
They're gonna make us pay it.
Right. But what about the things that aren't dictated? Really going, are you really going through every one of those lines and really saying, hey, maybe we can put this off for a little bit longer? Until we get, because right now, even, even some of the states right now, with, with what's going on in their places, they're even cutting the taxes off their gas again and doing all that stuff. That's all started back up because prices went back up. They, you know, when they came back down, that was a good time to plan ahead and say, hey, people don't feel it. Yeah, I know it's psychological where you're gonna feel it, you know, sooner or later, but if you don't see it so much, you don't feel it so much. But when you, when you're at this high, and suddenly tax another one on top of you, by God, you feel that. But when it's already down here, and you're going good, and everything's good, and that's when you should apply something like this to it. You don't apply it when, hey, everything's going back up, let's jack them up now, because you may feel it, but we do feel it, everybody feels it. So, anyway, I just want to-
I've heard people saying their, their taxes is double, triple. I don't believe it right here, doubling and tripling that much. You know, I don't-
Saying it's, it's causing them some hardships. I tell you, mine's just about, mine's just about double. I mean, forty-three percent, you're talking about four, almost three or four thousand dollars a year. And I'm going, nothing's improving. I live on the Mill Pond, which is a disaster, so I don't think I can unload my house for what they think it's worth. So, but we won't go on that, but I'm just telling you, you know, maybe not everyone got it doubled. Twenty-three, twenty-four percent, that's a lot still.
A lot of the value is set by the state, ain't it? That value, your property, not set by us.
Right. And, and that's why I'm not making that a big deal for me, but the whole thing is, you know, the whole mill is going up, one, almost one four percent, correct?
Half a mill.
It's still going up, it's still a lot to some people.
I know, I know, I know, not only that.
Ten dollars may not be much to me, and you, ten dollars, it's ten dollars.
Not only that, but, you know, like you're talking about a piece of plywood, thank you, or somewhere, a piece of plywood is coming down. You know, it went up, you needed a piece of plywood, I mean, we didn't make that piece of plywood go up, but not only the plywood, everything. You know that a well, I'd be, everything.
When it goes up, we don't add to it. See, that's what you're doing right now, is that plywood's up, now you're adding to it. And when it's down, add a little bit to it, and we don't feel it.
But I mean, the same expense, same expense. Same expense goes, you go out and buy something, and the county goes out and buys some, same thing, this same expense goes to the county.
Yeah, but what, but are you looking at the whole, sewage just went double in the county, just, but, but basically about double. Sewage and water, your little bill, no one planned ahead and said, whoa, this is gonna cost us a lot more than what it actually, actually doing. So we gotta jump it. They don't just gradually jump it up, they pop it. Mine went from forty-two dollars to eighty bucks. So that ain't that big, but I'm just saying, to some people, doubling that, that's double. Now you add that to what you're doing. And then electricity already went up, everyone knows that went up. So you add yours to it. So every time I turn around, someone's adding something to it, and then you throw, well, let's throw five cent on the gas too. Someone else will pay that, no one else is gonna pay that. That seventy percent people go out of town, they come through, we still pay a hundred percent, they don't pay it for me. So I'm just saying, planning, you know, when it's, when things are good, even though that's when you wanna enjoy things, you may have to make your plan to lift a little bit on that. And then it works out better when it comes down like this, because everything's going up. You're adding a little bit more to it, and if, if you're already on a tight budget and stuff, it's just a-
Yeah, we're just, again, I'll say it again.
And I know you feel for everybody, because you're the same people that live here and all that too.
See, we had one department come in, and we were looking to cut and cut and cut, and he said, well, I can't cut anymore unless you want me to start cutting employees. And when it's, you know, well, we don't have enough employees as it is, like in the road department, alone, sixteen employees short. Right now, they, they need to be, and to help keep the service up for the roads and all too.
And we've got, we've got several positions that are frozen.
Yeah.
Again, just trying to, trying to keep the budget-
Yeah, you got several open, I've seen those too. So, and I understand that, but that's your problem.
Do you know why we have these folks? You know why we have them? We don't pay them enough for somebody to come in.
The same thing in Jackson.
Guarantee you that I get calls every day about roads. Last week, I had a project I've been trying to get done for two months. Finally, the district supervisor started to do that project. He had to bring people off of other machinery to come do that project. It was a safety issue.
Yeah, I understand. Rent a business thirty-one years, I understand, understand, lack of milk in this thing. But you know what you have to do? Well, you still gotta tighten that up and find some way to make it work. And that's, that's what you're elected for. They don't have to make up that decision, because that's why they elected you to take care of them. Right now, I don't think they all feel like you're taken care of. But I understand, you know, anyway.
Go ahead, Mr. Phil.
See, a lot of people don't understand that employees, we're mandated to pay a dollar a year. That, y'all voted on that. And I'll, and I don't know if y'all in particularly one, but it paid to go up to twenty-five, twenty-six, a dollar a year. That's two thousand eighty dollars per employee. All right, can you imagine if you got three hundred employees, or over that, what we got? You add all that, so that's quite a bit of money right there. Well, we haven't been doing any increases. And that's where the problem is at. Like one guy said, you need to do a little along and along, for years and years, it didn't increase any. Now they're beginning to increase a little bit, and, you know, you gotta, how the money gotta come from somewhere.
But, but, but you know what? When I ran, when I ran Walmart, I made sure people needed to do this, and have this expensive app. I didn't raise the price on products. I didn't raise the price on the products, I made the adjustment on my operations. And that's what you gotta do, you can't, you can't just raise the price and hell up, we all got to pay for that, you know? Well, you know, it wasn't good as bang, but, you know.
As, Mr. Gilmore, that said, we are operating right now on past boards' decisions to continue to roll back prices, roll back tax rate over and over again. You know, we now reaping the benefits from that, those custom rollbacks. Like you said, we should have gradually increased when the times were low. And I, I agree with you one hundred percent on that. Exactly. Right, exactly.
Plan it ahead and say, hey, we're all in good shape out there, isn't this where these people are living or having?
But prior boards, we're rolling it back.
Commissioner McKinney is referring to prior boards. I've been sitting here for seven years, and yes, we held the rate. We also knew that we were going to get that increase. We held that seven point four five four five for several years just to make sure that the citizens did not get hurt as much. These citizens know better how to spend their money than I do. And that's one reason I'm, you know, I'm not a proponent of raising taxes.
Well, none of us are, are, Commissioner. But you know, running a business, when you operate a business, you're gonna get to the point where it's just controls, you, you don't have no control of. You're gonna stay a business or go out of business?
Well, when the state's raising it three percent per year, and we're getting a million plus in added revenue, I mean, you do have to learn to live within your means. And that's what everybody's saying, we gotta learn to live within our means.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
Would state your name, please?
Bill Fader, I'm gonna come straight. I wasn't gonna say anything, but you say you haven't raised taxes in seven years? That's irresponsible.
I agree.
Sorry, that's irresponsible. We get a rate increase every year. I was excited this year, I'm fixed income, I'm qualified. I don't know, celebration, but I got a seven percent increase this year. Couple gallons of gas. If you don't raise the rates every year, you're gonna end up in a situation like this. You need a cut. That's the only way out.
I agree.
Thank you.
But we held the rates because we knew the citizens were in trouble. We knew the state was coming in, they're gonna raise it three percent.
That puts them in worse trouble.
Pardon?
Everybody knows that the prices of everything increases every year, you have to increase every year. It's not gonna piss people off.
I disagree with you on that one. We have to learn to live within our means, is what we've got to do.
The gas is gonna go up and things like that, and everything, inflation's been going up for years. If you haven't increased your rates with inflation, that's irresponsible.
So what you're saying is, instead of going from seven point four, where we were last year, to seven point nine, we should have, over a three-year period that I've been here, we should have gone incrementally up to the point that we are now.
And we wouldn't be here.
Right. We, we'd still be where we are, though.
Yeah, we would have been a gradual increase, everybody wouldn't be shell shocked.
Right.
Right.
But they would have, each citizen would have been paying more in taxes, though, over that three-year period.
The new people wouldn't have known that there were increases.
No, but the people that have been living here would have been, would have paid more taxes over a three-year period, so how is that fair?
I think you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know what you're, I know what you're saying. I know, because I had, I had a business, still got a business.
And you increase your prices every year?
Yeah, if it goes up on me, I have to. I mean, I, I, I buy stuff right now, it cost me nearly a hundred percent more than it did five years ago.
And that's a healthy business.
Yeah, and you gotta keep going, you know, you ain't gonna go out of there, you're gonna be out the door.
Get stuck with twenty percent, fifty percent, whatever it is.
Boy, I, I run a business as well, and we, we've been in operation for sixty years here in Marianna. We've been, we've been successful for sixty years, and we raise our rates only when we have to. We raise our rates when things, the, the, the cost of us doing business goes up.
I, I understand that.
So I mean, it, you know, and, and that's what we're seeing. That's what we're seeing as the county, is the cost of running this county business is increased on us.
And whoever was in office before wasn't looking at the numbers and increasing the rates appropriately. Because we shouldn't be in this position where all of a sudden jumps up here.
It, it hasn't, it's, it's-
Mine went up three hundred bucks a year.
What, your what?
Yeah, my, my taxes. I'm not sure, I don't have the paperwork with me, but I looked at it, it's three hundred bucks more out of my pocket.
This year compared to last year? This year compared to last year? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Steve Curry, I didn't come here for this part of the meeting, but these guys have brought up a couple of things that, I just wanna ask one question. It's been driving me crazy ever since you guys started. What the hell is the sidewalk deal on ninety? How much did that cost?
I'm glad you asked. This is State of Florida D O T. They don't have anything to do with that.
My name is Mandy McKinstry. I'm sitting here listening to everybody talk about how they've given up holidays, going to Disney. They've cut back on their food and things like that. Many people have gotten multiple jobs. This is the county that doesn't pay a lot. A lot of the businesses don't pay, say, as much as sister counties, Bay County, I wouldn't say Dothan, Dothan actually pays less. Um, now they can go into the prisons for care to make more extra, to make extra money. But for the most part, most people are gonna get multiple jobs, because they're gonna make the ends meet, so they can possibly go to Disney. Now, they've been kind of creative in that way. They may sell things from home, or they may do this or that, but they've become creative with their budget. I want to challenge you as a board to become creative with your budget. Your county has not brought any industries in, large industries, that will foot your tax bill because you do have an aging population here. If you bring an industry that's going to pay more money, you're going to bring younger people to your county. As you're, I heard you say sixty years. So we take, the average person was twenty years, six years, they're now eighty. They're not making the money anymore. They can't pay it anymore. It's just not feasible for them. You have to bring new blood in so that they can work, they can create, they can spend in your area, because the, I'm telling you, the people my age in this area, they're going off to Panama City to test them, whatever, because there's things that they can enjoy, and they're spending their money there. Try to keep your money here if possible. Find places that will bring in revenue as opposed to asking your citizens to pay it. That would, that would be my only suggestion. It's not a quick fix. You have to woo companies to come in, and you actually have to get voters on board to bring companies in, and nobody likes change. Maybe word things properly, like, yes, we're gonna bring this in, it's gonna help to lower your taxes, it's gonna help to do this, or help you that, and also stand by your word and say, we did, we brought this company in, it's brought more jobs, we brought younger people in, we're bringing life into our county. Also, ecotourism, bring it in. I'm telling you, they're crazy for it, they'll spend lots of money with your county. Bring the money in for that. Find ways, if your citizens are creative with their budgets, be creative with yours too. Find ways to bring money in. Like I said, it's not gonna be a quick fix, it's not gonna be like overnight, and their tax bills are gonna disappear. It's not, but it will help further down the line to cover that, be a little creative. Thank you, guys.
Well, I, I will say that those are all good ideas, but those are all good ideas that we've had for years and years. We're doing economic development, we're doing ecotourism. We're, we're doing all that. But I mean, those aren't new ideas, and, and it's not that we haven't thought about doing those things, we are doing those things. We, as far as economic development goes, we've got, we are working hard at trying to bring in additional industry, additional manufacturing jobs, we're working on that every day. It's not as easy as just saying we need to bring more industry. And I, I know you know that, I know you know that, but I needed to say that.
Right, this is your highest paying provider here in Jackson County.
And part of it is the fact that we, we don't have a quality, we don't have a quantity- And part of it is the fact that we we don't have a quality, we don't have a quantity of workforce. We've got a workforce issue here.
You do.
And.
But if you build it, they will come.
Well, that's not necessarily true, but.
Yeah, of course, bring them in. But a lot of people from up north who aren't educated, who aren't looking for that um, nice country living, who want to get away from the city, it would be an opportunity for you as a citizen. To say, hey, there's many beautiful medical, they pull people from larger cities. I have a physician here for our nurse practitioners, somebody to help me do. It's a win.
We're we're working on all that. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Come on, come up to the podium so we can hear you. Please.
Yeah, I got a point of personal privilege. If there's no other speakers at this time, can we have a vote whether this body approves the twenty twenty-four county tax increase?
Absolutely. I think it's a good, I think may be one of the best things said tonight.
Some of the seniors want to get home before it could start counting.
I'm I'm one of those seniors. Okay, anybody else that wants to speak before we close out the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I just make a couple of comments?
Absolutely.
So because I do understand that there's a lot of moving parts to a budget of this magnitude, I just made a couple of notes that I thought uh, might at least provide some clarification. Uh, first of all, and I know that that some people absolutely realize this, but for those that may not, um, the trim notice that went out includes not only the county, but the school board, water management, as well as um, as we've said multiple times, uh, property increases that were out of you all's control, of course. Um, and so it did compound, and we do truly feel sensitive to that. Um, it was just not ideal. It wasn't an ideal situation. Uh, but after a number of years of doing things like freezing physicians, we do have a number of of physicians frozen. Uh, the challenge with that, as Commissioner Branch said, while we could say, well, we'll just keep freezing, we'll keep not filling, um, that then translates into frustration with the citizens, and so it really places a local government in a very precarious situation where, um, okay, we we won't do these things, but we're gonna, that's gonna translate into phone calls and anger and frustration. Um, so we're already sort of doing both. We're pursuing everything we could possibly cut, and how can we get the revenue where it needs to be? Um, so that's one thing that I wanted to say. As far as the uh, proposed tax rate, I really, really want to drive home. What's on the trim is one mill higher than it was last year, but that is not what the board's considering tonight. They're considering half a mill less than that. Uh, so the actual tax bill will not be what is on your trim notice. It would be less than that. Um, and then also, the county this year went through a strategic planning process. For those of you that don't know about that, I personally am happy to talk to you about it. Um, direct you to our website. And one of the things that it did is they compared us to comparable counties. And um, even tonight, if they do adopt the seven point nine four five zero, we would still be less than all of those comparable counties in our tax rate. So while you could, we could all say, myself included, well, I'm gonna move to um, wherever in these comparable counties, my tax rate would be higher than what this proposed is tonight. Uh, and then also, have, and they said it, but I'm just gonna say it again, that they set it higher because they cannot go beyond that tonight. They always set it a little higher because early in the budget process, they don't know if they're going to be able to balance or not. You're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars. And this, this isn't the budget. These are the changes we made. This is the budget. And so they're going page by page, and they're saying, well, we don't know for sure if we'll be able to balance, so we better set it high, and then we're gonna work our butts off to balance it with the lower amount, uh, which is what they did. And then also, minimum wage, you know, um, it's like Commissioner Crutchfield said, that this isn't a finger pointing thing. Many of us may or may not have voted for the minimum wage increase, but the reality is, it has nearly doubled from when that went into effect. And so every year, we're having to go up a dollar, so it'll go from eight, approximately eight dollars to fifteen by twenty-five, twenty-six. Almost all of our county employees are minimum wage employees. So what does that do to our local budget? It nearly doubled it in the salary line item, in taxes, in all the things that come with that. So I think that it's really just something I want to say, that this particular board has been faced with a really, really unfortunate and unfair set of circumstances, and it's not that they do not care. Um, I personally know each of them, and I personally watched them sit in here for weeks trying to find a way to do something other than raise taxes. It's just not in on to just want to raise taxes. We, they're raising it on themselves, they're raising it on their employees. Um, and so I just wanted to say, there's a lot of factors. I'm available in this building every single day. I would gladly meet with any of you. We can go through this book. If you have ideas on how to cut, we are willing to listen and willing to talk it through.
Thank you, Will. Good summarization of tonight's discussions, both from the live table and from the audience. Uh, if there's no one else in the audience that wishes to speak to either the millage rate or the tentative budget, we'll close out the public hearing, open up our regular session. And uh, the first uh, uh, the first item that we need to take action on is uh, the adoption of the tentative millage rate. Uh, the potential motion would be our move that we adopt a tentative millage rate of seven point nine four five oh for operating purposes of Jackson County for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four by resolution. Cheryl, entertain a motion to include the adoption of the tentative millage rate. A motion from Commissioner Branch. Second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions? Comments or ignore this in favor of the motion as stated, please signify berating in the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries four to one with Commissioner Peacock voting no. Thank you. The next item is uh, the adoption of the tentative budget. Uh, the potential motion would uh, read, I'm move, I'm moved that we adopt a tentative county budget in the amount of one hundred and seventeen million, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. This is net of transfers between funds for Jackson County for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four by resolution. So move. A motion from Commissioner McKinney, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions? Comments, clarifications, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify berating in the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries four to one, Mr. Peacock voting against.
Right, Mr. Chairman.
That motion includes the chairman signing the resolution on both of those motions.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would just like to make a comment that uh, I feel that there was a lot more work that could be done, and the county certainly uh, you know, having sat here seven years and gone through these books line by line by line, and you know, I think there's more that this board could have done to save more money. And we gotta learn to live within our means. And if it takes cutting, so be it. We just have to do it.
You know, I would counter that argument to say that we've gone through the budget. I've gone through the budget three years in a row now. We've been successful in cutting a number of the line items. But the, uh, again, the amount of revenue that this county is bringing in as a result of the taxes that we have in place are falling far short of the cost of running the government, uh, the services that we provide. Uh, and I think that those services are pretty much at a minimal level. And, uh, you know, I I want to echo what Ms. Daniels said. Uh, you know, I don't think any of us were were took this without going through a great deal of consternation and and a lot of uh, discussion and a lot of considerations. It's not an easy choice to make, but I feel like it was a choice that had to be made, and it's not that we're not empathetic with all of you out there. We certainly uh, understand uh, the fact that a lot of you are on uh, fixed incomes and are struggling to make meet um, to to maintain uh, to make it work in your household. Uh, it's similar in my household. I've had to cut back, but uh, we just, I don't think that we had the capability of getting uh, cutting the services to a degree that would allow us not to uh, raise the millage rate to this, to the point that we've done. And I think we've done it gradually, and I'm hopeful uh, that next year that we will be able to keep the rate exactly the same. I think we will be able to um, with some of the improvements that we're looking at doing and some of the cost-cutting measures that we're looking at putting in place, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to keep this uh, rate the same next year, and if we have to go up, maybe it will be just a very small percentage, but I'm hopeful that we can keep it at the same uh, seven point nine four five four of amount, so. All right, with that being said, um.
I want to make a comment.
Absolutely.
Probably could have been a place that we could cut. We probably could have cut the sheriff department, probably could have put fire and rescue, road department, place like like that. Now, I know you could drive down a bumpy road and you can gall and fuss. And all, and and you can make it, but if you had to call the fire and rescue to get an ambulance out to your house, if somebody uh, sick, maybe dying, whatever, you want to get there as quick as possible, and they need to, and if they could save your life, that's important, and I believe you all agree. It's important. If your house is on fire, you want them to get there as quick as possible. Yeah, we could have cut there, but then they might not be able to respond to it real quick. So I mean, that's a lot of stuff you're getting. I know you're paying taxes, and I know I had to pay taxes too. But if I call uh, fire, nine one one, I expect somebody to respond. Somebody breaking in my house, whatever, I need a law enforcement quick as possible. You know, and if the way they've been doing, they've been responding pretty quick, even with the ambulance. They they pretty good on doing what their their job to do. And that's what I wanted to bring out, you give out some thought.
Thank you, Commissioner Crutchfield. Okay, with that being said, I don't believe we've got any other matters before we go into our regular meeting, so we'll adjourn this special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, and we'll take a five-minute break. Thank you all.